We're looking to refinance one of our bonds upcoming in June.
That's the earliest we could refinance.
As early as we can refinance, and we just wanted to give everybody a heads up as to how that process works. And then maybe any or less will be back with us in April to kind of do it again, just so we know where we're at.
I'm sort of tensioning for Lester, and I know most of you know this, so he has stuff on a year to come, right, for a convention over the weekend. And the flights have mechanical problems on the plane, and they, believe it or not, said they couldn't go there for two days. And I'm still wondering if it's a real story or not, you know, when you're out there. Very convenient, the old spec out there. So, anyway, I'm here tonight and trying to pitch it for him. So, wanted to, if I could, take you through this a little bit and have you to answer your questions as we go. Probably the format of this is somewhat familiar, but again, I don't know. The first page is a chart, starting on the left-hand side, that just really shows the district's payment obligations for the three bond issues that we have outstanding. And so you'll see the colored codes at the top, the blue and the red and the green, just designate the three issues that you have outstanding. Now, it happened to be 2010 bond issues, which is coincidental, but in this case, it's been so much favorable for what we're talking about doing tonight. So, as you look, you know, across left to right for each fiscal year, you'll see really what the debt service obligation is. And again, this is called gross debt service obligation, so this is important reimbursement. This is the gross payment that the district makes, and then the district receives reimbursement back. And down towards the bottom of the page, as you see in the bold a little bit on the left side, purpose, tells you what those issues, what these issues are. Again, all 2010 bond issues, basically, to refinance really prior bonds, if you get toward building projects and so forth. The important date to remember on the first page is just down at the bottom where it says call date. And what that refers to is the date that you are permitted to, in essence, refinance those bonds, take the old bonds away from the investors who own them, redeem those bonds, and replace them. If we're fortunate enough that interest rates stay as low as they are, or even better yet, lower, then you could conceivably issue new bonds at a much lower rate, and then pull those bonds away from the investors who own these bonds right now. It's like refinancing your mortgages. You have people who own your old mortgages that these, that enter rates, we'll talk about. And as of October, if you're able to issue, get a new mortgage essentially by combining them, you would get a new mortgage and get rid of the old one. So you'll just replace the mortgage at lower rates. And that's the date, that October 1st is the date. And it happens to be, again, because you have three bond issues of 2010, they are all callable, what we call an optional call date, on the same date, October of 2015. So that actually works pretty well. Page two, again, some of this is just really graphics, so you can see, you know, how each bond issue, you know, what part of that you've got, you've got payments each year, each one is. So, again, if you look at the far right on page two, you'll see the colored code, and it just really shows you how the debt service is split up for each issue. That's really just informational more than anything, to be honest with you. I guess one of the key things just on this page is that, as you can see, the last year, really, your debt is very short, so that's fortunate. And really, the bulk is paid off from the year 2021, final debt 2022. So that, again, is fortunate and good for the district that it's very short-term. Page three, you may recall, on page one, I said that's your gross payment that you make on your debt service before any state reimbursement. So page three now shows the, what we call net debt, so it's exactly the same format, but what it shows you is, for each bond issue, what you're actually paying after you receive the state reimbursement. So it's your net payment to the state. And that actually is another, well, the following chart, you'll notice on page four, shows that that level, it's about $3 million per year. Notice the total across that line, about $3 million, and the gross is close to $3.5 million. So you're basically receiving about, you know, $400,000 to $500,000 dollars per year from the state in reimbursement. So, that just, again, is to give you a sort of graphic and an update to show you where you are. Page five is really something that I'm not going to spend more than an hour and a half on, but probably the best place to take, to buy a fireplace on a Friday night with a drink or something, if you're interested in history, because it's, what's most relevant, of course, is probably the very end of, between 2000 and 2015, the far right. Les has always liked this chart, so he often includes it, and he put this together. Page six is probably what's really relevant, and what that is, is really just a one-year chart, what we call, what's called the Bond Buyer Index, and that's actually a 20-year general obligation bond. So, again, it's just an indication, it gives you an idea of what rates it's going. And I'm sure you all know, if you've gone to the bank and, or tried to earn any money on a CD or anything, you know that they're paying nothing. It's horrible if you're an investor, it's wonderful if you're issuing debt. So, in other words, you can be issuing debt at very, very low rates. And as you can see, we're very close to the lows in the past year. It's only popped up a tiny bit in the past month or so, we hit those in January. So, again, that's why I'm sure Les is talking about this opportunity. Page seven gives you more of the specifics, and as I said, this is, you know, by bond issue. In other words, looking at page seven and just going down the page from left to right, you'll see each series, Series A, B, and C, and then the maturity date of each of those issues. So you'll notice under the maturity date, it shows 16, 17, 18, and so forth. So each of those bond issues has bonds coming due in each of those years. And if you go over one more column to the right, you'll see the interest rate. So those are the existing interest rates, and if you look at those, probably look at them and say, whoa, those are, actually, look, actually, good. And they do, and they were good when issued, but I don't know who would forecast that we'd be where we are today, this far into economic recovery, but with where rates are today, you would be replacing, for instance, if you look at the first one in 2016, that shows 2.4%, you would probably be replacing that at under a half percent. You'd be going from 2.4% to 0.5%. I'm just guessing, but, I mean, just to give you an idea of the magnitude of how far rates have gone. So, again, this is really just to show you the specifics of which bonds would be called, where they mature, and how much insurance needs here. Page eight, and we just ran this recently, just to give you an idea as to abruptly where this would be in present, what we call present value savings. And when I say present value savings, that's if you take any savings from a refinancing, we then say, where do they work today? If we gave them to you just today, rather than, some of, most, the majority, you'll see in a moment, are upfront and very quickly, the district would receive. There's a little bit that you get over a little bit of a period of time, so what we call present value, meaning that it's in today's dollars. And that's, if you look at the third line from the bottom where it says net present value savings, so that's after all costs, and that estimate is about $427,000. So, if we refinance all three issues together, you know, a single financing, which they were, they worked before, three separate issues, so the thought would be to combine it and make it a single one. So you'd only do this once, rather than three times again. And as of when Les ran this about a week ago, you'll see if this, I'm sorry, it wasn't a week ago, this was what just ran, was about 427. This is probably conservative, and again, we're going to try to be a bit conservative, because, again, we don't know, you know, a month, or a week from now, we're talking about a little bit of time down the road before this would be priced. Because, again, the rules do not permit you to issue your new refinancing issue more than 90 days prior to that October 1st date. In other words, you can't close your new bond issue. And these are higher rest regulations, so there's no latitude, we have no latitude. We cannot close your refinancing, new bond issue, more than 90 days prior to October 1st. So what we're saying, and as your superintendent said, we're here tonight, really, just again, to let you know it's there. We hope it'll continue, we'd love to see it get better. The thought would be that in April, you may then take action to start this process, and if you then started the process of preparing for this, you could price bonds, in other words, lock in the rates roughly in June, and then it would settle, you know, again, within 90 days, as close as we can get. In other words, we would get, we want to just get inside that 90 days, because every day we wait, in theory, if you have savings sitting on the table, it's savings that if indeed something were to change in the interest rate world, could be a problem. So, the thought is to move on that basis, to keep you, you know, sort of hedge you that way, and again, unless something dramatic changes in the market.
Excuse me, Jamie, while you're on that train of thought, because my thought is, and we've done it in the past, we can execute a motion approving action when it reaches a certain level.
Absolutely.
In other words, if we may approve it effective anytime after July 1, and then we would authorize the officers here to execute it, let's say, let's say it gets down to 0.5%,
Yes.
But Les or yourself say, you know, it's trending, you know, we're going to get down to 0.4.
Yes.
We don't have to do it on July 1st.
That is right.
Am I right?
You're absolutely right.
We often do that because it gives, and we probably have it here before, Rose, by your head.
We have, yeah.
Yeah, because it gives, really, it gives both of us, you as well as us, more flexibility.
Right.
Because if we don't, if we, by passing the motion, as you said, then you can, then we can take action, you've taken action.
Right.
And we can then take action
Okay.
when market conditions are favorable. If we don't do it that way, then we have to advertise a meeting three days ahead.
Exactly.
And just hope, keep our face price, that we hit the market on right then.
And market conditions are good. And that was my point, if we wait until a public meeting the following month, we may lose that opportunity, if it costs us $100,000, $200,000 in the snapping.
And we've seen that happen.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was still an option.
Very good point, it still isn't, we call it a parameters resolution.
Yep.
And we just basically say you will not issue more than a certain amount of debt at a certain maximum interest rate, and of course, you'd never do either, because you wouldn't have the savings if you did.
Right.
And then in that resolution, you specify a minimum savings level, typically either a dollar amount, or a dollar amount, and a percent, as you would on a mortgage.
Sure.
If you want to answer.
Yeah, I have a question also. If we call the bonds because the market is favorable, and we're going to save some money,
Yes.
will that change that 2021 date of being debt free?
No.
That'll still remain 2021?
Yes, we will match the, and that's a great question, because it's, and it's a question that we often get, and I often forget to cover it, because people always say, hey, I don't want to go from a non-maturian six years to a non-maturian 10 at that point.
Right.
Yes, that's what we do naturally.
We had talked last year, Les was here, and we could talk about in advance, like a taxable refunding.
Okay.
But in that case, we would have been going further out in date, I believe.
Yes.
That's why, that was something, that was something I was thinking about it last year.
All right, okay. Yeah, because I was curious about that, that change in the, thanks.
Thank you. I think it's my next to last page, or page nine, I mentioned a rule a little bit a moment ago about the present value, you know, that you don't get all the dollars upfront, but in this case, actually, the way this is set up, you get it pretty quickly. If you look at page nine, and look under the savings column, which is the third from the right, and then look at the dates there, you will see that on 7/15, in essence, that's the initial, you know, I think Les has this set up for closing around there, you would realize on 10/15 and 4/16, virtually 421,000 of that 434, that you notice on the next column down the bottom. So, that doesn't always work out that way, but it's fortunate here. We usually encourage if you can take the savings and get them upfront, it's sort of, you know, life spread out over five years, if you can get it upfront, it's in the district's interest, you get it immediately in your budget. So, that's the way this happens to work out, so just wanted to make sure you understood that.
I think that's what we were thinking also.
Good.
Yeah, just sort of wing it some money into our budget.
Yep, that's, and you get it right away, you get it very quickly. What else I missed? I think that's it, I believe. So, again, I think the purpose was really just to, you know, refresh you on this, let you know where it is approximately, and the goal would be, I'm sure for Les, you back in April, and give you another refresh, and then if you're prepared to, you know, assuming things are moving in the direction you'd like, then you could take action at that time.
Excuse me, if nobody else has any questions, Joe, if anyone can ask a question.
Yeah, I have one question, and I didn't see it here, it may be here somewhere, I just didn't see it. Do we have a, an estimated payment scheduled for the reissue bond at that level?
On page nine, it's only
Okay, I see it.
Yeah, that's just refunding debt service. So what's called refunding debt service would be the new combined debt service.
I see it.
Yeah, be a single payment, because it would, again, you'd run from three issues to one.
Sure.
And these are estimates, obviously, that
Sure.
Do any of the board members have questions at this time? Joe?
Yeah, I just want to, the total amount of bonds that are on call.
I don't have them papered out.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
It's all right. Part of 22, it's in here, it's up on the right table. There we go. Those that would be called would be 20,000,002.5. 20,000,002.5.
You said there's a particular date that you had to have?
Well, they're all callable on October 1st of 15. So what would happen is that if you issue bonds, for instance, and what we're generally talking here is, let's say we priced a bond issue in June of 15, that bond issue would close, let's say, in July of 15, for three months, essentially, from July to October 1st. Those dollars that from this new bond issue would send in the bank, in the trustee bank, waiting for that October 1st date. And 30 days prior to October 1st, your trustee bank, I'm not sure who that is, or as you may know.
Agent B.
Okay, would send out notices to the people who own your old bonds, saying that on October 1st, we are going to ask you to send your bonds to us, we're redeeming them. So that's, that's basically the timeline.
There's no added cost in there, is there?
No, I'm sorry, no way down.
There's no added cost in there?
No, no.
There's no paperwork to send them the notes?
That's right, the bank sends it out, sends out the notice, and they're already your existing
And if you missed that window date, what happens?
You could do it anytime thereafter. In other words, if we didn't do it October 1st, let's say, the market, I mean, this could happen in the real world. Let's say, for whatever reason, a month, or by June, the market, interest rates went up 2% from where we are today, but by October of 15, you know, actually, when we were going to call the ones, they came back down that 2% to where we are today. We, anytime thereafter, we can do it. So, that's only the first date, and anytime thereafter, so if things go against us for some reason, you know, at the district, we can always do it later. But we're aiming for the first possible date, and I'm sure you've read in the paper, heard all these rumors about the discussion of when the interest rates are going to move up, and when the Federal Reserve's going to take action, that's very much up in the air. Some people say this year, some people say not till next year, who knows?
I believe the presidential election coming up will probably stay the course.
Yep, who knows? So, so we're really just trying to get you in a position, and if it's, if it's at a level that is meaningful to you, you're ready to go, and if that evaporates, you can then do it anytime thereafter.
And again, Joe, that's why we would set the parameters and say, this is favorable to us, and then they could take action in between our regularly scheduled meetings. But we know that that's going to be our minimum savings. If it, if the interest rates went lower, all the better, but we're going to take, take nothing less than that, whatever those parameters are that we're set.
And now, as Al is saying, that Rosen is board, with all of them ourselves, we've done that in the past, and it's worked real well for Rosen, and the superintendent to have the okay to move forward when those rates are right for us.
I just wanted to clarify, there is no cost to the district to refinance?
Well, just the normal cost, I mean, the ones you typically pay when you do a bond issue. So you'll have your, the normal costs, the, what we call cost of issuance
Yes.
that are part of every financing.
Right, and that's my question, what is that cost?
Well, I don't have the breakdown of those, but it would be in the same, you know, you'd have your bond council, legal, you know, slister, all the typical things that you've paid before, and I'm sure Les will actually probably, in April, give you some compensation.
The savings that we're talking about here are net of the cost, correct?
These are, yes.
This would be net of the cost, this would be after cost.
Yes, these are all net of that, so we've already, you know, covered that generally.
Right, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Everyone.
Appreciate you coming up on this.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming up on this beautiful night. Okay. At this time, Dr. Laco will
You want to go through the agenda?
Yeah, we'll go through the agenda first. We're going to go right to page three, on the top, and the ones to look at. Just go through the calendar. We had discussed last month a couple of options. I have these options here for you, just another copy and color. The numbers are kind of hard to read, but Option one, which I just gave you, is the calendar that we've followed here for the last eight years. Option one has one teacher day in August, and then one in September, students would start on September 2nd, and 3rd, and then we follow through from there. Tended graduation date on option one is June 2nd. And we follow the same in-service days that we have, so if we went with option one, if you look at motion number 13, right, those act 80 days in option one would be October 30th, January 16th, and February 12th. In the option two calendar, we start essentially a week earlier, and the teacher in-service days at the beginning of the year would be August 24th and 25th, and essentially, we would get four student days in during August, okay? Now, our rationale there for that is pretty simple. I mean, we're living right now in a year where we're scrambling for time, right? And to grab four instructional days prior to September would be a good thing for us, I believe. You know, people talk about, and we've talked about, you know, we build in, days in the calendar for Sunday, we tack them on at the end, what would we do? Historically here, we've always tacked them on to the end. Both of these companies continue to do that. If we were to build days into the calendar, we would have to work in a spring break, I would think, or we'd have to extend an Easter vacation. Building in days for snow in October, November, and December really doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Our snow comes in January, February, and March, so this option two calendar gives us a tentative graduation day, which, you know, you and I all know will never happen, at May 25th. We've also, in option two calendar, worked in three extra act 80 days in an effort to try to get some more professional development time. And if those act 80 days were indeed on bad weather days, if the school was closed, obviously, they'd be closed. If on those act 80 days, which are all early dismissals, by the way, we'd have, we had a two-hour delay, for example, that day, we just have a regular day of school on a two-hour delay day. We're trying to get time to work with teachers on all the initiatives that we have going on here, everything from teacher evaluation to common core implementation to assessment, all of it. And we struggle with that time right now. Having that extra time would be helpful. Whether we declare for act 80 days on our calendar or not, we still have enough instructional time built into the calendar to meet our 990 hours at the secondary level and our 900 hours at the elementary level, regardless of whether or not we choose to use act 80, okay? What act 80 does for us is allows us to claim that in-service time as hours of instruction, and we get credited for that, for the total hours we're required to have. So, I told you last, in one of my emails, last time we talked, I'm recommending option two as a calendar. Gives us an earlier start, hopefully helps to ameliorate some of the snow days by getting an earlier start, and gives us a little bit more professional development time. And that's, that's my recommendation. Option one gives us the same calendar we've had, essentially, for the last probably eight or nine years, at least eight years.
Dr. Laco, as of right now, how many snow days do we have?
Today was 11.
11? And where does that take us into this June calendar?
Doris, I don't know right off the top of my head, it's somewhere around the 13th.
16th.
It's the 16th, and that's a Thursday.
The 12th is a Friday, and that was the 10th day.
That's Tuesday.
So it's a Tuesday.
A Tuesday.
You don't tell the weatherman that we have some days yet that we could get away with.
Let's hope, it's only the 1st of March, so. In motion number 13, if you look at it there, I have the dates for those, and we'd have to write them in, depending on what calendar option you chose. So we could also write in the details in motion as well.
When I think about groups that have addressed this in the past, we know that our area relies heavily on tourism, and we have a number of businesses in the area, our students as summer employees, and we're bringing them back basically a full week earlier than we would otherwise.
Yes.
With option two.
With option two.
Does option two, with the in-service days, take away a half a day of instruction for our children also?
We would have, we would lose, Mr. Portner, about two and a half hours from 1:00 to 3:30, actually, no, from noon to 3:30. So, yeah, just about a half a day.
For each?
For each.
For each additional day.
What, can you describe what happens in an in-service and what effect it has?
Well, for the inservices that we run now, those days are timed to coincide with when we give assessments, so we give benchmark assessments. It allows teachers a little bit of time, just among themselves, either at grade level or departments, to analyze that data, and kind of try to plan instruction around what they know in the moment. So we try to strategically plan that throughout the year. So we do one in October, and then we do one in January and February, prior to the April testing window.
So what it does then is, I guess, if I'm understanding you correctly, what it does is it allows them to, together, figure out where the weaknesses are and address it?
But it is a structured review.
Yeah, yeah, very structured, highly structured.
With not using built-in snow days, is there a financial aspect to that as well, to go, to tack on to the end of school year, as opposed to having to go on, say, President's Day on debt, or going on Easter Monday?
I wouldn't think so, because contractually, like, for example, with WWEA, we're contracted to do 184 and a half days, however we do them, same with transportation, 180 days. So those contracts have to be met one way or the other. Whether we tack them on at the end, or whether we put them?
Talk of the personal two, though, I mean, do we, and then obviously, some of the questions and concerns have been with planning of an Easter vacation, or with aspects like that, but as we're sitting here today, on a day that we did close school, the 11th time this year, my personal thought on it is that we need to try to put in these buffers that we did used to have here at Ustrom. We used to have to go for snow days at Ustrom, and I think that with the prevalent ratio that the school districts are now closing at such a rate due to the safety of the kids and the safety of the employees, and the buses, and the drivers, and the community, it's something that two days is two days, but two days doesn't bring us potentially to June 20th or June 21st.
Absolutely, I don't disagree with you. My concern with burying snow days inside is that regardless of what we do, people are going, if we give a break in February, for example, people are going to make plans, and they're going to go whether we have, whether we have school or not. So I have some concerns about census on those days. I don't know where the balance is.
Right, because the other way, Doctor, you're right, the other way, AJ, is that a lot of people are planning vacations mid-June, third week of June, and then sometimes we're still in school the other way.
Same thing.
So it's, it's really, it's really a self-call.
It's hard.
The other thing that you, you mentioned, is that we would have to potentially build in a break. Why would we have to potentially build in a break?
Well, if we wanted, I would think that right now, for example, if you looked at Easter, I think we have a Good Friday, Easter, Monday, that would give us two, right? President's Day would give us three. We generally have between eight and 12. So I would, I would recommend if we're going to build in snow days, that we lengthen somewhere, so we have days to, so we have days to get. Because right now, these two calendars, inside the calendar, there aren't that many days that we can get during the time when we need to get them, you know?
And that's another reason why you want the option two, right? That's why you want, you're recommending option two, not that we're going to start before
And Mr. Hollister brings up a good point, is that, you know, Is that, you know, from a labor perspective, it's not something that we, you know, will take lightly. It's fact.
Yeah, we get a request every year for trying to start after Labor Day from, was that gentleman, Williams?
Yeah.
Pumpkin of labor business.
Dave Williams and the Vacation Bureau as well.
Both calendars start before Labor Day.
Both are, okay.
And then the 30th of November, school, for years we've always had school closed. Can you reiterate why we close school on the Monday after Thanksgiving?
That's always been the first day of the year season.
And I understand that. But again, we're looking outside the box here to try to bring in days with, again, closing school prevalently and higher days.
Good point, but actually absentee ratio is sky and high on first day.
That might be your highest absentee ratio day of the whole year if you don't, if you have school on that day. Which is fine, the board sends the calendar, but I know it's gonna happen.
We have to have a conversation on how we're gonna try to offset these snow days. And thinking outside the box is the way in which we have to do it. This is the way it's been forever, you know, and...
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I'm not necessarily saying that. I'm saying that there are probably over many kids in school that day.
We've tried both ways, to be honest with you. We've tried filling in those President's Day and Easter and all that and...
Because you know, it's probably the other way, then we're running late in the June. You're always gonna hurt someone's feelings, whether it's an Easter vacation, whether it's a summer vacation, whether it's a hunting day. But I mean, we have to do what's best for the education of the students. Not necessarily what's best for one sector of a group or a community.
Yeah.
Well, giant said. Like I said, giant, like it says, nobody's gonna be here anyway.
I'm okay with either of these calendars. My only concern is what we're doing to our local businesses, that extra week in ours. We know that they rely on it, you know? And the students rely on it too. Unfortunately, that's a pretty big impact for this area. We've had the groups here in the past, we know that it's gonna happen. I don't have a strong opinion other than that because I know that impacts those businesses.
Yeah, well, hopefully Keane's too, Al. You're right. Even Keane's Campgrounds, a lot of our students have worked in up there also.
It's one of the biggest weekends of the year. I understand that. I mean, we've heard them speak. Administratively, we could go here.
Another faction to keep in mind too is that we run into several students, especially that are 12th grade, that when you come into the end of June, they've signed on for some early enrollment. They're going away to the military. They run into a lot of time issues there. We've had that in several years now.
And we could have a year like 2012 where we, if you recall, had two snow days.
Yeah, and statistically, if you go back over the last 10 years, most days had less than 12.
You said that one time, we made those 180, 180 days. We lose the Saturday. Joe asked, what about Saturdays? I don't know if anybody else would.
Well, that's been done in the past.
For seniors, it's been done. There are very clear rules on that, whether or not you can do it.
Not, again, do you want option two so that you can have your act eighty days at more strategic times or...
No, not, well, the times are equally strategic, whether the calendar is there. Option two gives us more time. But administratively, we've used the option one calendar for years and we can get what we need to get done with that as well. I was just looking at a different way to think about the calendar. And that early start grabbing four instructional days in August, when over the last couple of years, we've been having 10 to 12 snow days would be a big, would be a big challenge.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Could we table this in? Because there's...
No, we can't, though. Okay, this has to get done this morning.
Okay, there's so much discussion both ways, it's...
Can I say something? From the teacher perspective, the four days for us helps with Keystone testing, helps with AP testing.
That's a very good point.
The snow days really hurt. They just do. I do just because I'm always crunched for time for their AP tests. And all the teachers are crunched for time for the Keystone. Those days don't change. So we take the AP test the first, second week of May. It doesn't matter if they have one snow day or 12. So four extra days of instruction helps us tremendously. That's just that.
The snow days hurt the children also in the continuity of those tests, keeping them out of the classrooms. My concern with that additional act eighty days is that's not happening at school and for instruction. I know there's an importance of it. You make the point very clear and that's one of the things we struggle with, is the balance between the two. This year specifically with students not being able to get in classrooms. I mean, I don't know, when was the last time we had a solid week of school? I don't remember when it was.
Not that we're counting, but...
That was the first one.
It was like a cold, yeah. Do we have a question? Both calendars provide our 990 hours. Do they exceed the 990?
I understand correctly. Yes, they both do.
By a different amount?
Yeah, the option one has more than option two.
Okay.
We're over 1,000.
Okay, the administration's offering option two as their preferred method. Is there anybody who strongly disagrees with that? Can we put that on as a motion?
If we put it on the motion, I just strongly disagree with it.
Yeah. And again, you know, the, I think that...
I mean, I understand that.
My concern is...
I do have a concern, and you took it away from me with the early... I know we had a strong group come out. And they have come out in years, although this year they don't seem to be existing. They're probably frozen and snowed in. But with that early start and going back an extra week and grabbing an extra week off of it is a concern.
Gary, the problem with those other groups that always come to see us about starting later, usually always miss the calendar date for us to renew our calendar for the following year.
That's true, it's usually later.
Yeah, and they usually come later. We already got everything in place.
You're right, Don, I do remember that now. It's usually after the fact.
As a business owner, I hire high school students constantly. I, the first thing I ask them, well, I know now because I have children in school, is, you know, when are you gonna need to start school? That's one of my first questions. So as a business owner, if you're taking those on, then you have to know in advance. What's the difference whether you start early or they stay late? Summer started by June, by Labor Day, or Memorial Day. That's our busiest, that's when it starts in Yamland. Labor Day weekend. So now I gotta wait till June 21st so these kids get out of school to get, so it's catch 22. So I don't, I think it's...
I'm glad you said that because, well, that was my opinion. But every year we have the, what is it, the travel?
Yeah, the Vacation Bureau.
The Vacation Bureau comes and tells us the opposite.
Yeah, I mean...
And as a business owner, I feel the same way.
Yeah, it's Memorial Day weekend, that's when it starts. So it doesn't matter to me, I, you know, either way, I'm waiting or, you know, have to figure out the last two weeks of school or, you know, last two weeks of summer. I'm pulling more hours, you know, or I'm hiring new help. Who can, you know, but those kids know, they know when school starts. They know, you know, they can tell the business owner, I have to, this is when it starts, I can't do anything about it. You know?
If you had to guess, is it more important to be in there on Memorial Day or on Labor Day? Does it help? Just a wild guess.
Over the years, I've noticed, you know, it starts, definitely always starts Memorial Day. We start opening later, we stay open, well, we try to close nine in the winter because it's, Yamland's dead. But come Memorial Day, we're opening until 10 o'clock. You know what I mean? And it's, you could already see it. It's later, later, people are out. Memorial Day, I see it now trending as they're, you know, their school starts too. You know what I mean? So they're getting out of here. And it's not nice, the weather's not even nice. You know what I mean? The last few years, it hasn't been conducive to anything.
So the start is better for you as a business owner?
It doesn't, it doesn't matter to me.
It doesn't matter either.
But I would rather them start early than, you know, because come June, it's graduation. So you have, they all want, you know, parties and this and that, you know, and they're gonna go to college, so they wanna leave a week sooner. It's just, I think starting early would be better.
Mrs. Wayman, for educational purposes and all that with the testing and all that, you feel starting with earlier?
That's just my perspective.
Well, that's what we're looking for.
I'm always begging for time.
Yeah, you can't control when you have to do your testing, so every day you get in before that.
It's a big deal, those tests are a huge part of our, you know, what we do. Any extra day helps. Every day we have off now, I think, we have an AP test. And then you say to kids, we do more and more and more because that date doesn't change. It's no good.
Joe?
If you did this in the past, put up a Saturday, why can't you do it again as another option? Because you could put the Saturday at the end of the week. Any week you lose snow days. Just say, hey, we gotta come to school this weekend.
I'm not sure if you can do that, though. It's like an emergency request, I'm sorry, to use a Saturday, I believe.
And only for seniors who, so if seniors are going to graduate, graduation is going to occur before the 180th day. School's mandated to be 180 days, that's school code. Then we can grab a Saturday, I think, one a month for seniors only.
Or is it just for seniors? Could it be for the whole school? Or is it a mandate?
You can do it for the whole school, you have to establish one of those days as the off day. So if you have a snow day on a Monday and then the next week a snow day on a Tuesday, if you're gonna establish a whole school year's worth of going to school on Saturday, one of the days during the week has to be an off day. And it has to be the same.
It just seems to me that a Saturday would be your best option because you have it. But you're saying you can only take off seniors?
We did it, we did it years ago. And actually, it was because we were running late this school year again.
You better run late this year.
And we requested to go Saturdays and they okay.
And again, you know, we have students who are signed up for the military or early college enrollment. I mean, they're our obligation on their part, so we can't run to the end of June just recklessly.
That's the way.
That's why we struggle with it because...
Yes, I agree with that.
We hope for good weather all winter.
Let's move on. I have a feeling there's gonna be a motion for option two. I think we have a majority in that regard, so let's plan on that. Those dates, they will be on motion 13. For option two would be January 13th, February 12th, and March 9th, I believe.
Option two?
Yes.
September 23rd?
9/23.
October 30th? November 11th? January 18th? February 12th? March 9th?
Did you say 13th or 18th, or 19th?
18th. Okay.
Number 14 is a real estate tax rebate. Rebate, we're recommending that the Board of Education approve this rebate to the amount of $1,456.02 on a property sale in township. Rebate is due to a veteran's tax exemption certification. Item number 15 is the annual NEIU 19 budget, which you had in your packets. Looks like, looks like this. This year is recommended the Board of Education approve the budget for the 1516 school year with the estimated share from the Western Wayne School District at $85,698.82. This number has remained static for at least three years. I think this is the third year at this value. There are often questions about how that number is set. And basically, it's set based on property values as they're established in the district. That's why you'll see when you look at the comparisons among school districts, we pay a whole lot relative to districts, at least that have a similar population number of children that we do, but their square mileage is a lot smaller. So we get penalized essentially for having a lot of land. If you look at the IU 19 budget in general, rural school districts, that's how it works. Particularly in Wayne County.
Not for Mount Rose.
Kids.
But we have kids.
We have quite a few more though than Mount Rose.
Well, they're 33,000 versus 85,000, apparently not a good comparison.
I looked at Valley View.
Right, go on, David, because that's...
No, it was more rural, more urban anyway. Yeah, Mount Rose is more rural, it's more in line with us.
If we vote, if we vote no, it makes no difference anyway, right?
Right.
So, we vote no.
If we vote no, the state sends our money from our budget from the state and gives it to the IU so we can vote no and still get some.
That's cool. Versus what you have set aside here.
What's that number?
Well, 85,000, right?
Yes, yes.
Will that number from the state, will that be the same number?
It would be the same number, yeah. And they would deduct it from what they were funding us, so we've asked those questions a few times.
But for twice the money?
And we didn't like the answer.
We get the same services as the school comparable in student sizes.
That's why I'm kind of agreeing with you.
Yeah, well, that's a good point.
Now, what services are they that we receive up here in the Rose, if you could, that we get for our investment?
This is the general operating budget, so it would be their, the programs they do. It's not special ed, special ed is separate. We do a separate budget that we repay to them for special ed, but it would include mostly the other services they do. Next item on the agenda is one of them, they do joint purchasing for us. That's something we do.
Oh, right, okay.
All the districts, we go in and do the bidding for higher volumes to try to see a bigger savings than us individually going out to bid.
Would that be like the consortium with the healthcare and all that also?
Correct, that's all, correct.
Okay.
Number 16 is recommended the Board of Education authorize the participation of this Western Wayne School District in the joint purchasing of copy paper and number two fuel oil through NEIU 19. We've done this for many years, Ray Rose.
We do, and it doesn't mean we always do it in a good place, you know? It's just, sometimes it doesn't work out well.
Right, we have options and we don't have any end if we bid.
Well, we see the numbers, we don't have to pay them.
We don't have to, stay with them.
Do you have the numbers, though?
They're going to bid out, they'll bid out and we don't have any others. This is the approval to...
This is letting them know we're in on the bidding, right, Rose?
Yes.
We don't have an obligation to go with it. You can have it.
We don't. No, we can pull them in.
Even if we all vote no.
It's...
I'm just, you're gonna pay.
They're independent motions, I mean, you could still do the joint purchasing.
17 is an agreement with WVIA. Public television radio for their D media program at Level 2. It's $1,425 a year. They're offering a three-year agreement, which gives us a little bit of a discount. I'll tell you, this essentially, from the list of things I sent you, all the stuff on that page, we are heavy participants in two of those things. Number one is scholastic scrimmage, the scholastic ball that's broadcast on WVIA. We participate in that. And we also participate heavily in Artist of the Week. Those are the two big things that we get through VIA in this package. So the bottom line is if we want to continue to participate in those two things, we need to pay this. If we want to cease participation in those two things, then we don't pay it, we don't do that.
But from the letter that we received, I just got mine today, they have a lot to offer for our students. Whether we take advantage of them right now or not,
That's right.
in the past or in the future, they do have multiple programs available for our students.
But when you look at the letter, which is...
It says free in here.
Yeah, and the things that you're paying for, really, you can stop reading at the end of the first paragraph. Because everything else is now part of this agreement. What's in the first paragraph is what you're paying.
Really?
And again, of those three, three things that are there, the two biggest things are scholastic ball and Artist of the Week.
Very good.
18 is a new transportation contract we're recommending at the state formula for the 1415 school year. Sarah Wassman, Dan Punk, 126, Lake Arrow, the Western Wayne High School and Middle School effective February 9th, 2015. 19 is acceptance of deputy tax collector. Accepting Cindy Ziegler Heffey's appointment of Deborah Grumlich as deputy tax collector for Sterling Township. Those, that motion is similar to what we've been doing over the past two months. Personnel-wise this month, we have two substitute candidates, Christopher Ortiz in the area of early childhood and special education and Suzette Basile in the area of teacher aide, cafeteria custodian, and secretary. Resignations, we have two resignations. Three, rather, I'm sorry. Recommend to the Board of Education approve the resignation of Misty Toot effective February 27th, 2015. She's a special education aide at Evergreen and we're gonna need to replace that position. Recommending that the Board of Education approve the resignation of Abigail Forrest effective upon release. I don't have a date on her left. I don't have a date on her letter. Abigail is a special education teacher in a highly specialized classroom at Evergreen. That position, we're going to need to replace. Recommended for the Board of Education approve the resignation for retirement purposes of Susan Shumansky, attentively effective April 20th, 2015. That position, we need to discuss, in terms of replacement. But those are three resignations. And then the last part of that are volunteers, Charles Bailey for BAM and Christopher Peterson for varsity baseball. And then beyond, Personnel is informational. Read Across America on March 2nd, which obviously happened today. I don't have a rescheduled date on that yet. The dangers of social media presentation is scheduled for March 12th at 7:00 PM. Wayne County Harrow and Prevention Task Meeting, March 19th at 7:00 PM, both of those at the high school. Robert Wilson Science Fair, March 26th, 6 through 8:00 PM. Pre-kindergarten and kindergarten registration will be held the week of March 23rd, 2015. Pending program availability. We have a student teacher, Morgan Jones, Evergreen Elementary with Jill Butler. She's physical education. And that's at Evergreen. We'll skip to future meetings, April 8th. Board committee meeting in the district boardroom, held April 13th by public board meeting here, as well at 7:00 PM. April 22nd, a special meeting for the presentation of narrative budget for the 1516 school year at the district boardroom here at 6:00 PM. Meetings held February 18th, rescheduled monthly board meeting on adoption of the preliminary budget was held here at 6:00. February 18th, also, an executive session for legal and personnel was held here. And February 24th, we had a board committee meeting for negotiations with WWBA Board Committee, that was 6:30 PM. Mr. McNugget brought up concerns about daycare at Wilson and Evergreen. And I'm looking for costs, Gary, if we're going to, as a board, decide to charge those businesses. We don't currently, we need to set some sort of price.
You don't want to start.
Yep. We need to discuss post-aid coaching and extracurricular positions for the fall and pre-K registration. We need to figure out from a budgetary perspective, and we need to do this in April, or as soon as we can, what we're looking at in terms of those programs, and what positions of those we're going to fill. This past week, we had a request for an extra coach from the track and field group. I denied that request in the interest of trying to be fiscally conservative, although, as in the past, that request comes with a very good argument as to why we need to coach. You know, we're looking at over 100 kids, correct, coach, 115?
We finished last year with 115 kids, junior varsity.
Combined, right?
Yes.
And you have how many coaches on your staff?
Total of five.
Total of five. So, you know, do the quick math in your head, an extra coach is not a reasonable request, but.
I think Justin did the math for us. He put in his letter, that was an excellent letter, says that it's 23 students per coach. So I don't want to be too negative, our teachers teach with 23 to 24 students in the classroom.
Can I just say something about that? But you've got other programs, sports programs in this district, Nikki, Bulldog, you've got other sports programs in this district who have less kids with more coaches, so we're talking like five kids per coach. So how is that acceptable, but what sport is better?
Football. It always comes back to football, because football tends to get the preparation, the celebration in schools. And we all know that.
In my mind.
Football, excuse me, football does not.
In my mind, I will settle this.
I'll explain that to you.
It may not stay that way.
Let me say something about football. Every school in the Lackawanna League has seven coaches to an assistant, some have eight or nine.
That's not my.
We're, no, I'm not done yet. We're at the bottom of five. There's kids out there that are learning football for the first time in the seventh, eighth grade, ninth grade. We've had our best program ever, and we're growing. And the bottom line is, there's a lot of work out there in football to make sure that these kids learn how to tackle, block, the whole nine yards. You don't just win games.
We've got track kids who are pole vaulting.
Yeah, exactly, I don't have nothing against your track team. I'm not against track, believe me. I'm all for track, I'm not against them requesting the extra coach. But the bottom line in football is, football brings in $50,000 a year in revenue from the concession stand, from the gate, there's $2,000 at the gate.
You don't charge at the gate for track. You don't charge at the gate for track.
No, no, we don't, no, we don't. I don't have a, I'm just explaining to some people that aren't aware of what we, the revenue that is generated, and the time it takes.
Does that revenue that's generated pay for coaches for football?
It goes into the budget, the gate goes into the budget. There was probably $20,000 this year that went back into the budget from five home football games. And the concession stand for the football pays for every sport, track, field, every sport, girls and boys, for their banquet. So that revenue there takes care of itself, and it helps pay for the people that run it. And then all the other stands that we have at the football games, the crowds are getting better and bigger, even though they were good in the past. But now that we're winning, we're bringing in more revenue in a lot of other areas for a lot of other programs that have stands set up. But it always comes to football, and football with five assistants and one head coach is what the contractor allows us to have, anyway. Previous coaches had seven and one, because they were, they were in, pretty much in order with the other teams in the league.
Other teams in the league have more kids on their teams.
Are, you, how many kids do we have?
I don't know what the numbers are right now, but I can tell you right now that sitting at those games last year, reading your roster, there were kids on those rosters who hadn't played all season. So are those numbers being used when you're talking about coaches, rostered of kids who don't even participate in the program?
Obviously, you have a problem with it.
We're not gonna debate football. I'll tell you right now, we're not gonna debate it.
Thank you.
I think your point's well taken, Nikki. And we do, Mr. McDonald, we do have to do a cost analysis on each of these. Our main concern is safety. These coaches bring up a very good point all the time. If we look at Mr. Collins's team, he's got students doing multi.